Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the January 28, 2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Could I have a roll call, please?
Yes, all five selectmen are present, as well as town council and the town administrator.
Let's have a pledge of allegiance. Let's see, who do we want to?
How about one of us?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements. Alan, you're up. You happen to be on my right, so it works out that way.
No, it's actually pretty quiet right now. This is the fifth week of the month.
All right. Jim, you got any announcements?
The CMW refuse districts will be meeting tomorrow at 4:00 for subcommittee and 5:00 for the full committee in the Marion Town Hall, if anybody's interested. Thank you.
Is that it? Is that all?
That's it.
Okay. How about you, Peter? Mary? All right, quiet on announcements tonight. Citizens' comments. Anybody here to speak to us tonight? Okay, good. Board comments. Now, I know you can't let this one go, right? Go ahead, Alan.
I'm ready for bear. Over the last month or so, I've been, Jim and I go back and forth talking during the meetings and some other times, and I finally realized that for the time I was before selectmen, three years in, I was very active as town council. I was looking at Mass General Law all the time. Anything coming before us, I spent a lot of time looking up and checking everything because I was very concerned we'd do it right. And over the last couple of years, I felt like I was kind of skating along, working on my prior history and not really doing the same work. So Jim basically kind of embarrassed me lately by the amount of work he does, and I just want to thank him for that. Unfortunately, it means that I'm stepping back up to where I used to be, which may or may not be pleasant. So I'm giving you advance notice.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Now...
Yeah, you're okay, Jim. Yeah. All right.
So remember, whatever happens, it's Jim's fault. Now, here's the first shot for the night. We had a discussion, and we had electronic voting last fall at the town meeting. And originally, what was going to happen was the community events committee had basically agreed to pay for the electronic voting because it goes under a community event, et cetera. And the wording was such that it seemed to be correct to do. What happened was that the company that we decided to use very generously gave us the first time free. So we were planning to go forward for the spring with the same electronic voting, with the same process. But some things came up, and there was questions whether or not the CEC could actually pay for the electronic voting, even though it says "community events." And we also spoke to the person who wrote the original article, which is Jimmy Potter, who's now a selectman of the town of Brawn, and explanation that he was actually planning for, to do things with the town meeting to make it better for the community. And in the actual article, it talks about residence as well as tourism. So the issue came up. The accounting office was questioning whether they could do it or not. I talked to town council, and I got some information from town council, throwing you under the bus now. And what has to happen? It'll be fun night tonight, let me tell you. What has to happen, very simply, is this. The moderator has to request to the CEC to actually pay for the voting. And if that is done with a written request, then it can be done that way. The real choice really would be normally to do it through the clerk's budget, et cetera. So in following Jim's example, I pulled the actual budgets and all the different revenue accounts for the town clerk. There is a particular account that always has money sitting at that never gets used as a rule. So there is funds there to pay for this, so the clerks can pay for it, and they can move funds around if they have to, to adjust it. And I have the information I'll pass on, so it'll be on file. But there's more than enough room for the clerk to actually pay for it. So I'm hoping either the clerk or the moderator will arrange this and have it happen, because almost everybody I've spoke to over the last four months or so is all happy with what happened with the voting at town meeting the last time around, how it ran, smooth, et cetera. So it's up to the two of them to make the decision whether we have electronic voting or not. As a selectman, I can't ask for it. I'm not allowed to request it from CEC. So that's where that is right now.
All right.
Thank you.
Jim?
Now, I'll wait till the liaison report.
Okay. Peter? Oh, Mary?
Nope.
Okay. Next up is appointments, reappointments and interviews, election of poll worker.
All right. I move that we approve Stephanie LeBlanc as an election poll worker for a term that expires by no later than June 30, 2020.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Town business. I'm going to bring and move this out a little bit because I want to bring the superintendent up. So let's move to the superintendent stuff. Come on down.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is the accelerated repair program for the MS roof in HVAC.
Yes.
And we also have a couple of articles or an article that you put in, so we're going to do that at the same time, if that's okay.
Great. Thank you. Before you, we're asking the board of selectmen to please vote approval to allow us to move forward the MSBA accelerated repair. It would be on the middle school HVAC and the roof, and at the high school, it would be on HVAC. These are two separate projects that we would be putting in for. And just to give you an idea, you know, for the last couple of years, we've been very concerned about our HVAC, but even more concerned about the roof at the middle school just because of the state of, the condition that it's in. So just to give you an idea of how much money we're spending to upkeep or just to fix what is broken. So in the fiscal year 19 and '20, and of course, we're not only halfway through in the '20, we've spent at the high school $70,387 on HVAC repairs. And at the middle school, between the roof and HVAC, we're at $61,430. So this is an ongoing problem for us. We feel the accelerated repair, if possible, would certainly take care of our concerns. Again, if, if this is voted and we would submit, the MSBA would review. If we would be the schools that were chosen, then they would come and do a visit. Probably the earliest that this would ever come to town meeting for a vote would be in the spring of next year, and that would be if we're lucky.
Should we ask Eric first? You haven't gone through this? Have you gone through this yet? Have you had some conversation about this?
Well, we've talked about it. We know some of the work needs to be done. I think we apply, and then we're going to have to just project this out for, I mean, it's going to depend on what our reimbursements are as well. I think we've been in the, what, the low 70s?
It's just getting the process started, isn't it?
Right. Yeah, I think it's worth it to get the process started. Yeah.
What's the, what's the rough estimate of total cost?
We would say probably totally... Probably 10,000, 10 million.
And to the extent that even if we received full reimbursement on that, which is what, just say 75% for, so that's $2.5 million, is that something that we would bond out? Or is that something that we would seek a debt exclusion for? And that's a pretty good chunk of money. I don't see how we can go for a debt exclusion. We just did it with a school. That would be pretty tough.
No, we'd have to maximize the borrowing on that. We'd be looking at between 10 to 20 years.
Yeah, okay.
On the borrowing, whatever the maximum amount is.
Go ahead, Alan.
Again, thanks to Jim. I went and pulled capital planning, the plans and everything else. This is not on the capital plan. It hasn't been discussed or approved, so I have a problem right off the bat with even asking for this at this point, where it's not like a drop dead emergency, et cetera. It's not on the plan. I think the fall town meeting, there was $250,000 for HVAC and repairs and furniture, but not for the, not for the middle school. So my concern is that, A, it hasn't gone before capital planning, and something as much as a $10 million piece obviously qualifies for the $50,000 trigger. And I believe it has to go through them. Terrick basically makes the decision on capital planning at the end of the day, but it still needs to go to the capital planning committee and be put on their report. It's not there.
Okay. Jim, did you have something?
It's not the amount of money. It's, in a sense, is there a plan in place for capital improvement over the number of years present and forthcoming or upcoming so that we'll have an idea, you know, what the life expectancies for the different large, large cost items would be? Do you have that in place in the school department? And have we moved it forward into the town administrator's office or through capital planning so as we move forward, we can kind of have an idea that these cost items will be coming up? Not just this one, but in general, for all the school buildings and...
Sure, I'd be happy to speak to that. Last year, we had had some conversations about the HVAC. We have several classrooms at the high school that we don't have air circulating. We had had a conversation. We were hoping that we would be able to borrow and do some major repairs. Unfortunately, that didn't come to fruition. As far as the roof, if you recall, last year when we had the seagulls drop the shells and we had to have some roof repair, part of the insurance discussion that we were having with the people is we wanted a larger section repaired. They wouldn't repair the larger section because the roof had already almost been deemed failed. Therefore, if something major would happen to the middle school section of the roof that we're asking for replacement, I think it's going to be very difficult to maintain it and keep the repairs up. We have great concerns that at some point, we're going to have a high wind and it's going to be ripped off. It's in that poor of a condition. And we've had some discussions about this. As far as other projects, if we could get HVAC repaired and the roof, at this point, most of our major infrastructures were in okay shape. We replaced bleachers during the summer. We're getting ready to do some scoreboards, so we're able to take care of some of those issues. There is absolutely no way in the school budget that we can even address.
No, I wouldn't expect that. I'm just wondering if you have a five-year or 10-year plan, just looking out in general for any major expenses which is going to be associated with any of your buildings, you know, just putting aside the bleachers and the scoreboards and the other things, the actual structures. And if not, I think it would be nice to have that in place. And, and I know most governmental organizations have those in place.
We do.
It would be helpful, I think, moving forward so we could plan it. I know you, reading the document, you said the roof is nearly 30 years old. And is that part of the portion that failed?
Yes.
Okay.
The middle school roof is 30 years old?
Part of it.
Yeah, they only, only this small over here, right?
It's the wing that...
The part, the other side was where the new building was at.
Correct.
Right, so where the new...
So that's all new?
Right, right.
Well, when was that?
20 years ago.
20 years. In 10 years, I'm glad.
10 years old.
When you're talking about a rubber roof, the difference between 30 and 20 is huge. It's a big difference in the shape of the roof. Of course, rubber roofs, if you don't drop shells on them and cut them up, should last for considerable length of time. Now, what have we done in order to keep them from putting shells back on the roof?
Can we put some coyotes up there?
Kind of difficult, right? To deal with, right?
Suggestions, yeah. But to answer Mr. Muniz's question, there is, there is a list of, of projects that does exist for the school department. I don't have it, we don't have it tonight, but we could certainly share that. One thing that I would add is that when we were talking about building a new elementary school, we heard repeatedly that these buildings needed to be maintained. And so that's what we're trying to accomplish here. And to not, to not submit the statement of interest and get this ball rolling, we would be remiss if we didn't do that. Because these things, as she, you know, alluded to, it takes time. It takes years to get through this process. And so that's why we're here tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you're talking about not even getting something before town meeting before next spring, I think that gives the capital planning committee more than enough time to weigh in. But, you know, it's obviously something that needs to be done. I mean, we can't have the kids, you know, getting rained on in three years or five years or whatever, you know, surviving amount the roof has left, so...
And these windows of opportunity only open up, you know, when MSB, MSBA opens them for us.
Opens the door, right.
So that's why, again, why the timing is as it is.
We're having a capital planning meeting on the 13th. I don't think we've had one since October, so there hasn't been an opportunity for them to come before capital planning.
Yeah, I'm just concerned with the process.
Yeah.
You know, I have to go by the rules that we have in our charter and bylaws, and this is the document in this section here, which will go on file here, shows what the school department has supplied up till 2023 for projects. And it's not in there at all, and therefore, there's no way for them to properly plan and give the information to the town administrator to make a decision on how he wants to handle it. And that's my issue.
No, and I, we have, we sometimes have the adage that perfection's the enemy of progress, so...
Yeah, but again, doing it the proper way is the way it ends up right. Watching and doing something causes problems.
Alan, if we, if we, if, let's say we approve this and let them go start the process, right, which makes sense, I think. They could weigh into capital planning at some point, and, you know, if it didn't, if it didn't come to pass and it didn't work out, there's no skin off anybody's nose, you know? This is just kind of rolling the ball in the corridor and see where it goes, right?
Right. But again, we're working with a deadline from MSBA also.
Yeah.
When is that?
February 14.
To submit this...
I'm not against the idea of submitting it. It's just, you know, you're looking at two buildings for, you're saying, you know, it could be upwards of $10 million, you know, for the roof and the HVAC and the air ventilators and the classrooms. I mean, can you break it into pieces? I mean...
Maybe.
I mean, do which is can. I'm not against it. It's just, this is all of a sudden, boom.
Well, the only thing I'm glad about is, in my opinion, is this is probably the first time I've ever seen anybody come before it was already failed. I mean, destroyed. And then they come and say, and, you know, not you guys.
Yeah.
They come and say, hey, guess what? We have no choice. We got a hole in the roof.
Right.
We've got water pouring in the building. We got this. It's destroying the building. You know, it, you know, we were right when they talked about maintenance. They meant it, you know, keeping up to it. And that's, I'm glad you're here to at least start the process.
Well, and that goes to what I said earlier, you know, that, yeah, we're trying to do that before.
And the, we all know that one of the first things that were cut when, back when, what, '09 with the 9C cuts with everything along the way, it's been the maintenance. It's been the maintaining buildings and stuff. Those are the first things to go, and as we've been trying to build back up, you know, that, that's been nice, but we're trying not to go backwards, but trying to make those jumps. We were told pretty well by this community that to make do with what we have with, from the budget, and that doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to maintain your buildings if you're just trying to get the day-to-day operations done. That's, in some ways, maintenance has become luxuries. Look at our maintenance department, what it's been cut down to.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else?
We should, we should look at all the town buildings and their needs and prioritize, you know, because we only have so much money to work with, as you're saying. And it could be that this, you know, roofs are extremely important. If your roof goes and starts to leak, it's just, you know, more trouble. And when you're doing roofs, you got to do your HVAC and stuff up on the roof. I understand all that. But I mean, just overall picture. And thank for bringing it forward, actually, you know? That's all.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting because for all the town buildings, we have, really, when it comes down to it, two FTEs working on all the town buildings.
We don't have a town engineer who can go out and do inspections. I mean, that would be a nice thing to have as well, but again, that's a luxury. Who do we get rid of to, what two people do we get rid of to hire one town engineer?
But to Jim's, to selectman Muniz's point, there's been what some of the communities are doing, and it's an awful name of a company, but Dude Solutions has Facility Solutions. And they come out and they give in, they give in, basically do a survey of all the buildings, update them with their useful life, when the last, and that sort of gets you the new start point. But you need to have the staff to keep up and maintain, say, yep, we've done, you know, the steam, the steam traps have been done, you know, and things like that. So that's about, believe it or not, the program, then going forward, your initial investment's close to 100,000. In a way, that's easier than hiring new people because you can have a one-time capital investment from free cash, but you need to keep and go, go on. They hound us constantly. It's something we're looking into. I think we could always go together in on it because it's, you're right, trying to prioritize in what you've done and then having accidents such as seagulls, which, yeah, that we certainly didn't expect. So, you know, it's, it's obviously something that should be prioritized, and maybe that's something we, we bring them in to do a, to do a, to give us an idea of what they do.
Yeah, I'm happy to vote for this, so long as, you know, maybe the new roof has to be lime or orange color or something like that. Black tells a seagull pavement. And pavement, you know, you drop your hard shells on pavement and good things happen, so that's why the bomb in the roof. Put a different color.
It's the same color. Yeah, they actually make a white. They can actually make them white. Believe it or not, the roof can be white.
Really?
Yeah. They use, so...
I'm just trying to protect the new roof, Jim. It's going to cost 10 million bucks.
White, maybe. Maybe they wouldn't pay any attention to white. They wouldn't look like a thing, maybe. I don't know. Maybe a question to ask.
Maybe.
All right, what's your pleasure?
Go ahead.
All right. I move that we approve the accelerated repair program application for the middle school roof.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
You're going to abstain?
Yeah.
Okay, so 4-0-1, 4-0-1. All right, now, since you're here, let's take out the articles that they have. Do you have one article? How many articles are there?
I believe there are two.
Two.
I could, if I could just ask, though, to go back to MSBA, if you could reflect the statement of interest, the vote pervade it, because MSBA will need top...
Oh, they want us to do it exactly?
Yeah, but you could just have it...
And there are two, there are two statements of interest?
Where is that?
It's over here, Jim said.
Yeah, okay. When you get that back, as, they want it to be exactly on this motion line.
Right, and there are two?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw it, so... All right, while they're doing that, and we'll get to it. I have two articles. One is naming of the elementary school location of 63 Minor Ave. And the other one is to see if the town will transfer at midnight on the final day of occupancy, occupancy care, custody and control, the John Williams Deacon School, so-called, and as further described in the filings, on the file of the clerk. So basically, you want to, you want to transfer the school back to the town? Is that what you're talking about here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So, can you read it? The statement, there's a line on there that is a motion statement. We have to read on that over there. There's a motion statement here. Statement of interest right here. This is what you got to read, okay? And then you put the date in here as you go by.
Okay. Statement of interest on the SOI vote resolved, having convened in an open meeting on January 28, 2020, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Board of Selectmen of Wareham, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated...
February 14.
January, what is it?
February, February something, right?
Yeah, February 14, also.
February 14 for the Wareham Middle School located at 4 Viking Drive, Wareham, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories or category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Want to read the entire thing?
Nope, that's it. That's all you needed, just the statement at the beginning, plus, you know, you already included what was in the body from the top. So, so that's a motion made by Mary, seconded by...
Jim.
Jim? You seconding that? Yep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, okay? No, you want, you want...
No, it's 4-0-1.
Sorry, 4-0-1.
4-0-1.
4-0-1, okay.
Need that one too?
So that takes care of that.
The second one names the high school.
The second one for the high school?
Correct.
Yeah, you got to do them both, right?
Yes.
So you got to read that one again. That one's for the high school.
Okay. Statement of interest, SOI vote resolved, having convened in an open meeting on January 28, 2020, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Board of Selectmen of Wareham, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated February 14, 2020, for the Wareham High School located at 7 Viking Drive, Wareham, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category, categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future.
All right, motion made by Mary, seconded by Jim?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, 4-0-1. Okay, so those are all set. We'll sign those up, and we'll go on. All right, so first thing, let's see, you want to turn the school back, and this is an article. So basically, guys, they have an article here to turn the school back to the town. The William Deacon School. All right, so is there anything you want to say about it? No?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Just for the public, maybe, just explain what this means.
It just means that right now, there's the custody and care of the school is in control of the school committee. And what they want to do is give it back to the town. Well, that'll help the town at some point with disposition of the building when you move to the new building, which is, I think, was what you're trying to make happen.
Yes.
Right. So if everybody understands that. So you want to make a motion to approve, put that on the warrant?
Sure. I move that we approve the article to transfer the John...
Not approve it, just put it on the warrant.
Put it on the warrant. Transfer the John W. Deacon Elementary School located at 760 Main Street, Wareham.
Okay. Motion made by Mary, seconded by, seconded by Peter. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay. Now, the next one is title, naming of the school, to see if the town will vote to approve the name of the new elementary school as Wareham Elementary School. Is there anything you want to say about that?
I believe it's been said. I know. What would you like to say about that?
The less the better.[1719.12]
The less the better. Okay, that's fine. All right, so anybody have anything new? Go ahead, Alan, you're on.
I have one word. No.
Okay. Anybody else? Anything they want to say?
Yeah, I'm not supporting this. I still, I just, I'm sorry, and it makes me sad that the names of the families that originally donated the land are being dropped, so.
They're not being dropped, though. They're not being dropped from, they're going to be incorporated into the school. I mean, they're not, this would, wouldn't incorporate them into the name of the school, but they'll still be incorporated into the school in a, in a major way. You know, I, you know, I wish you, I wish, you know, I was able to show you what this innovation hub in the elementary school looks like. It's the center of the building. It's, you know, and that'll be one of the opportunities to use one of those names. And there'll be other opportunities to use that name. So this article is only meant to give the naming of the school to the, to town meeting. The, the school has not been named.
Yes, it has.
It hasn't.
It has. It was in the article. It was approved at town meeting.
That was a name of an article. That was a name of an article.
I'm telling you, that's its name. You can argue with me all you want, but that's its name.
So...
That is the school's name.
I don't want to argue with you, but I guess I just disagree.
It's not your responsibility, it's ours. I can tell you that that's what it is.
Well, I guess I would ask you then, where, where does it say that it's your responsibility? Because in other communities...
I did not, I sent you the information from council about who gets to name the school, didn't I? I did. I sent it to the board.
Perhaps not to me because I'm not the chair.
Well, I sent it to your board, and I also sent it to the superintendent.
Well, I do have a message that came from town council to our chair that says that he was asked about his opinion about who would name the school. And in his opinion, the proper process for naming the school is to dedicate the property by a town meeting vote. And so that's what we're proposing to do. That was from Mr. Bowen. That was his opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, well, I have some issues, but just in terms of what took place at town meeting. The warrant article, I mean, it was right, it wasn't even buried in the language of the article. It was in the actual title of the article that authorized the debt exclusion to go forward, you know, pending the vote of the election, of course, to override two and a half. But, I mean, it was right there for everybody to see. I know, at least on one occasion, the soup, and beforehand, I know that I had spoken about that publicly when I think it might have been the School Building Committee was before us, or maybe it was the School Committee, and I don't remember exactly who was here. I would assume that you would have been. But, I mean, I sort of came up with that on the spot, and I'm not trying to take credit for the name, but it was discussed publicly. Nobody had any objections to it. And nobody said boo about this for almost a year after it was approved at the ballot box. And then all of a sudden, I don't know what the genesis of trying to come up with a new name was. It just seemed to happen, you know, internally in the school department or in the school committee. So, I mean, I can't support putting this on the warrant. You know, one of the things that needs to be considered here is when you have families that act as benefactors towards the town, I think we need to respect that in the long term, not the short term. That school opened up in 1970, I believe, the Deacon School, Minutav School. I think I was in it the first year. I think that opened up in 66. And, you know, at the time, and maybe we don't do this enough anymore, there was, there was a lot of celebration of the fact that, in each case, there was a family that stepped forward and made those schools possible. The Minutav family through the donation of the Minutav Forest and then the subsequent use of the land. The Deacon's family by helping to provide the land to the town. I also understand that the Deacon's family continues to, I don't know if endowment is the right word, but I understand that they continue to assist somewhat financially with the Deacon's School and so on and so forth. So I understand the desire for uniformity, you know, Wareham this, Wareham that, Wareham the other thing. But I think we need to, you know, continue to honor and respect the people who made the two original schools possible. I would hope that in so doing, those families would continue to offer their support and assistance to the extent that they can and feel that they should to the school department and to the Wareham Public Schools. I can pretty much guarantee you that if you take names off, they won't do that. The third thing is, if you call this school, if we, if we stick with what we have, which is, you know, Deacon School at Minutav Forest, that opens up a third opportunity for benefactor, for your science center or your, whatever center it is you're talking about here. You know, wouldn't it be nice to have a third name involved? We must have somebody out there who's, you know, got some money, maybe looking at their estate planning. Maybe the clock's ticking and they're looking up saying, well, I want to offload some assets here. I mean, think about that as a possibility. I mean, I don't think we can put the naming rights. I mean, I just saw Mr. Sullivan's eyes, ears prick up. But, I mean, you know, just, just consider it in that context that, you know, not only are we discarding history if we just go to Wareham Elementary School, but we're also discarding the opportunity to try to see if we can get people to assist the schools.
So, can I, no one is trying to minimize the contributions that either of these families have made. There have been presentations at the School Building Committee and at the School Committee meetings by the principals at each school explaining how those, those contributions by those families are used at the schools, you know, how much they're appreciated at the schools. And that, and by what is being proposed is never meant to minimize what they've contributed. That was never, that was never the goal. Keep in mind that this building project started as a replacement of Minutav Forest School, not of Deacon School. Deacon School was included by the MSBA after we started this process, and they realized that there was a need. And then we were fortunate enough to be able to build one school to replace both schools. So now we're proposing this name, Deacon School at Minutav Forest. If we're honest, we all know that at Minutav Forest is gonna fall off of that name. No one is going to call that school Deacon School at Minutav Forest. It's gonna be called Deacon School.
Well, that's up, that's up to individuals as to how they want to abbreviate.
Well, I mean, if we're, I'll be honest with each other, you know, that's, that's what's going to happen. That aside, so if what you're saying is that because you named the article that school name, what you're saying is that you named the school because it was never named by anyone else. And I've spent a lot of time researching. There's a new elementary school in Carver. There's a new elementary school in Bourne. And what happened in those communities is they had community meetings where everyone was invited to have an opportunity to talk about what the name of the school would be. And it's happening now in Easton where they're building a new elementary school. It happens all over the state. I couldn't find one instance of where, with all due respect, the Board of Selectmen named the school.
Well, I don't think we did. Town meeting did. I mean, we put a warrant article on.
You put the name...
People had every opportunity, if they wanted, right then and there.
You put the name of the, that school on that article.
Go ahead and say, I'd like to amend the article so that it's called the Wareham Elementary School. Not a single person did that.
I, I would say, and I, believe me, I've asked lots of people, that no one believed, including me, that we were, when I was voting yes at town meeting, that we were naming that school. And when we, between the time that you had that meeting and you named that article, we went to the finance committee, of course, following the process of town meeting. And at that time, I was the chair of the school committee, and I questioned the name of the article with the finance committee. And I said, you know, why does it have this name? That's not the name of the school yet. And I was told, because that's the name of the article. It's not the name of the school.
Well, I can't speak for what the finance committee told you. I'm not responsible for what comes out of my mouth. I can tell you...
But you are responsible for the name of the article.
That's correct. And, and I can tell you that on at least one and probably two occasions, because I remember Patrick weighing in as well, this was the name that was discussed by us in front of, I believe, the superintendent, but certainly represented as a school committee.
No, so...
And nobody said boo about it at the time. So that's why I have a problem with this.
So, we discussed this, but back in September, September 11th of 2018, we were here discussing the article for fall town meeting. I'm, I'm sure Dr. Shaverhood and I were here, and I'm not sure who else. We discussed the article, just like we are now, but we left the meeting. And at that time, it was your procedure that you didn't always vote at the time of the discussion on the articles. You would have your discussions, and then you would vote at the end of the meeting. So when our discussion was over, we left the meeting. Then about a half an hour later, this, this, this happened. Trust me, I've looked it up. After we left the meeting, you had your vote on the article. And at that time, you attached the name, Deacon School at Minutav Forest. We weren't here at the meeting. No one was here to say anything at that time, to say, no, please don't name the article that, that name.
Well, it was brought up at prior meetings, so I don't know why anybody didn't say anything about it then.
Well, I mean, brought up, but it wasn't said, oh, that's the name of the school. And again, I would ask, with all due respect, where does it say that the Selectmen name the school? Shouldn't we be allowing the people of the town who voted to build this school at least the opportunity? I'm not asking...
Well, you should be asking for a ballot question, then.
Well, we're asking for a town meeting vote.
Yeah, go ahead.
What's the rationale behind naming it the Wareham Elementary School? Just because it's a...
Because we have Wareham High School, we have Wareham Middle School. By naming it Wareham Elementary School, it gives us the opportunity to bring the two buildings together, not name the school either, either name. And like I said, there are many opportunities within the school to memorialize the name, the both names of the schools and as well as others. And like I said, there had been a presentation, and I'm sure the principals and the others from the school department who gave this presentation would be happy to come and bring it to you also. They've given it to the School Building Committee and at the School Committee.
I, you know...
About, more about the rationale.
I'm just, I'm happy we're getting a new school and... I don't have a lot to say about this beyond, I just wanted to know, you know, why you wanted to just name it that. And I was at the town meeting, and I don't remember in clarity exactly what happened. I guess I could go watch it or look at the warrant for what reason. I don't really have much more to say on this.
Okay, anybody else? Go ahead, Alan.
What happens is that we, we lose our institutional knowledge and recognition of a lot of things when we start to do stuff. I travel, you know, quite a bit. I just came back from Nevada. I don't think there's one school in the Nevada Sandy Valley area that is named after a person or a region. I haven't seen elementary school anywhere in any of my travels. There's county government all over the place outside of New England, and they're all named after people. But in this case here, we have two families, you know, that have a lot of history. They've done a lot of things, and to put something inside the name of the building, that's fine. But I think in this case here, we're, we're doing a disservice to the community historically by not having those names on the building and not naming the school that way. It's a sign in front of the building. You can call it the elementary school inside. But I have a hard time with this because I think those families have invested when this town didn't have very much money. It's no different than if the YMCA, it's the Gleason YMCA, because the Gleason family put their money in. It's not the, it's not the South Coast YMCA. It's the Gleason, because they put their money into it. They made it possible. And the same thing with these two schools, and that's where it should be, in my opinion. I don't want to fight back and forth because I think it's getting out of hand, but...
Anybody else? All right, so what's your pleasure?
Need a vote.
I know.
Or not.
You're not gonna vote? You're gonna make a motion?
Well, somebody has to make a motion.
You can make a motion to not vote for it.
I'll make the, so I...
Second.
Motion made by Alan, seconded by Mary, not to, not to put it on the warrant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
I'm gonna abstain on this.
All right, so it's 4-0-1.
Point of order.
Yeah. What's your point of order?
My point of order is that under the charter, any department or committee can bring to the town meeting... Would you have the Selectmen to put on...
You have, you have to come up and use the microphone.
Fine.
She's right. She, yes.
Yeah, I am. Point of order. Under the charter, the Board of Selectmen are the gatekeepers of the warrant. However, any correctly and authorized board or committee is able to bring to you warrant, articles to be placed on the warrant. Your discussion this evening, while it was interesting, was, in my opinion, off-base. They simply are asking you to put the article on the warrant.
Right, and we said no.
But you don't have the right...
We do have the right.
Let me explain this. We did a charter change.
Did a charter change that says we can't.
It was approved in 2018. It's under state law.
It, it's not in the current charter.
You're right.
I know I'm right.
It says will. Selectmen will. It doesn't, it's, that's a word. I just read it this week.
If the change isn't there, it should be.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm just telling you...
It went on it, went to the legislature.
I am telling you, having spent every Monday since November 4th, looking at it... There may be a piece that has not yet been signed.
It was signed, it's a law by the governor.
When?
In 2018. I can, if you give me a few minutes, I can pull it up on my phone because I got emails.
I have it, I have the entire body.
It's a Selectman policy. That's what we're gonna do. Thank you. I appreciate it. Your point of order is denied. Okay, so that's, that's what it is. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have CBG Grant. Actually, let's do the CBG Grant. Come on down there, young man. Mr. Samborn.
Good evening.
Now, remember, you gotta get close to that mic, okay?
I will try to remember that.
Okay.
I trust that the board got the memo from me dated the 22nd. So, just wanted to come before you briefly to summarize what we're thinking about for a grant application. We'll be coming before you again for the formal public hearing in two weeks. So, we're asking for one action by the board tonight to get the ball rolling officially. But wanted to outline the activities we're thinking of including in the grant. We have the, as noted in the RFP, we have the, as noted in the memo, we have requests or proposals out for, from social service providers for funding. Those proposals are due next week. Under the state's rules, you can fund up to 20% of your total grant for public social services and up to five different agencies. So, in the past, the board has supported funding the maximum that you can, both in terms of number of proposals and the maximum funding. So obviously, we need to wait to see whether or not we get meritorious proposals in next week. But my assumption, based on our recent past history, is there are always more requests than you're able to fund, both in dollars and in number of programs. The other activity that I would suggest be included would be the continuation of the Housing Rehabilitation Program. It was not funded under the most recent grant. We took a year's break. We've actually committed almost fully all of the funds right now that we have available. So there will be a gap in funding. We continue to get demand from local residents for assistance for this program, which, as you know, is a loan program where the, if the property is sold within a 15-year period after the assistance is given, then those funds are repaid to the town after 15 years. It converts to a grant. The last activity we're thinking about is a public improvements project in Onset. You'll recall from prior years that there's been interest in investing in Onset because there's been so much investment in Wareham Village. You approved an activity two years ago that included the completion of a slums and blight inventory, which would ready the town to be able to propose activities. The state has still not accepted that, has not approved that, simply because they're backlogged. However, I had a discussion on Monday with the manager of the CDPG program at DHCD, and he can give a conditional acceptance to a proposal that I presented to them. And that is to improve the walkways surrounding and the walk, and the pathways through the park and the bluff overlooking the bay. Those are paver blocks, paving there. They've really settled. It's very uneven. It's, in fact, hazardous in some places, given the settlement of, of the pavers. And so it was, as a result of a tour of Onset by the town administrator, by Mr. Menard, Ken Buckland and me, we went around, looked at possible activities, and... Ken Buckland, and me, we went around, looked at possible activities, and the improvement of the sidewalks around the park and through the park is actually Mr. Menard's priority project for this grant. One of the things we hope to do, if the board decides to move forward with this, is to modify, for the walkways and pathways within the park, we hope to actually modify them so the grades are not so steep to make, to make them follow the contour of the land so there's a more gradual path up to the crest of the hill and the gazebo, so it's more accessible, more easily accessible to persons with disabilities and just people who have some limited mobility issues. So, I just wanted to give a preliminary glimpse as to what we're thinking of and get the board's reaction from it.
Okay. Alan?
One thing, I was talking with Derek this morning, and he was talking exactly about that, but when I was at the MMA on Friday, Mass, 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 I stopped in at DHCD to say hello and ask them, you know, some questions. And one of the gentlemen there was talking about some project which I didn't have a clue, and I told him I didn't know about it, so what you've just said now.
He didn't have a clue?
I didn't have a clue. He asked me about, he started talking about something, and then what Derek told me this morning, didn't register until you said DHCD, and then I realized what gentleman was talking about. So I guess it is in place there, that they want to do it. The other thing I have a question about.
That's why we don't let you out too much, Alan.
Yeah, I know. But when you don't, but when you don't tell me things, you can get me in trouble. Or I can mess, mess things up. We're one of the 11 mini entitlement communities, which gives us an advantage that we get a guaranteed grant, rather than having to correct. What is our status, you know, say, over the next five years, of staying in that position or losing it?
For that length of time, it's unknown. I think the state has said the mini entitlement designation is, I can't remember offhand right now, it's good for at least one, perhaps two additional years beyond this year.
Okay. Jim, any questions?
I read the proposal and, and that's your answer.
Jim?
I got, I'm sorry, Bob, I turned it off. I read your proposal, and I appreciate it, and I saw you had a, a number of areas in onset that could possibly qualify for the paver replacement, just not the one. Where would we get our biggest bang for the buck as far as linear footage of repair? Do we know? I mean, have we looked at that or?
Well, you're probably, I mean, on a linear foot basis, you're probably getting less of a bang for the buck from a pure amount that you can accomplish by doing the park, simply because you're going to be doing some grading and some contour changes there. So probably any of the streets, I mean, any number, almost all of the sidewalks throughout the core of onset need to be done.
Yes, that's what I'm kind of getting at, is there's some areas that lie well still and others are, as you say, are caving in or, you know, there's dips and.
Actively caving in or?
Well, yeah, you know, and, and, you know, so maybe you do it each year, you do a section of it, I'm just saying, overall, looking at it, you can do a dramatic thing at the park or can you, can you piecemeal some of it for repair and then do, you know, with these funds and, and also do a project?
Well, exactly, if I just may, what, what I've not said, you know, once the slums and blight inventory gets approved by the state, which it will eventually, they're just backlogged, that's all. That designation, which qual, which will qualify the core of onset village for a variety of projects, that designation is good for 10 years. So the intent is, maybe not every year in the next 10 years, but the intent is to continue improvements there.
Right, but you were going to answer the question, I think.
When I look at, Jim, it's, I sort of, I say it a lot because of our, our needs, how do you eat an elephant? It's one bite at a time.
Correct.
And we're trying to really, when I looked at it, it was creating, starting there, including our access points along the beach, the, from those, from those stairs that are, that are no longer, that are becoming less and less access, accessible, creating actual accessible opportunities, almost creating a loop around the village itself, and then working from that, from, almost in circles, back in to finalize it. Because I agree, we could choose almost any section and start moving, but I think we start.
You recommend it too in the proposal.
And I think this is where we start a sort of the core, the core, move out and then in, because otherwise, it's going to be a nightmare of trying to say, and I'll tell you what we will hear for the feedback from peoples, why did you choose theirs? Well, theirs had more need. Nope, mine was much worse. So when I think of it, it's almost creating a plan that's based almost on a, almost on the 30,000-foot view makes the most, makes the most sense.
Again, I was just asking, where we get the most bang for the buck?
Yeah.
One thing, we.
Sometimes I give you the answer.
You know, one, one thing to, to consider with all of this too, and this is for Jim as well, you know, when it comes to onset, those streets are going to be ripped up sometime within the next 10 or 15 years, cer, maybe even sooner, depending on how rapidly that sewer system there fails. So, if you're going to be down there destroying, you know, pretty much every roadway in onset to install new sewer lines, I don't think you want to put any substantial investment into.
You don't think we'll reline them?
We'll try and reline the faucet.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's not the sewer that has remained. I'm just worried, it's the, the water lines, and we saw from south to, from West Boulevard down to South Boulevard, breaks and brand new, and the brand new, and it was, it was pretty, I don't often use this term, I was heartbroken to see, we, we started with that area as part of trying to, trying to better onset and seeing the, the cuts into them and the, you know, it was, it was pretty tough to see, so that's what Mr. Menard and myself have been sitting down and trying to figure out, how do we keep on upgrading, especially the streets themselves, when we don't know what the plan is from the water district on their replacement or lining of the pipes, if that's necessary? Because if they would tell us, we're going to 11th, 11th this year, we would follow right after, you know? That's the type of things we.
But just, we have to require curb-to-curb paving, that's all. That's how you do it, and then they cut it straight and they got to do curb-to-curb?
Yeah, they, they don't.
You don't have any issue.
They don't like that.
It doesn't matter whether they like it or not.
Any way we look at it.
What the board will make a policy, they got to do curb-to-curb repair, that takes care of the whole thing. Go ahead, Jim.
I'm, I'm good, any way you look at it, I'm in favor of, you know, putting in the application.
Okay. Anybody else? Did I have a motion, please, to give him the authorization he needs?
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Peter, seconded by Alan, any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, thank you, sir.
So, there's a, there's a specific motion I would like you to take, which is to designate the town administrator as environmental certifying officer.
So moved.
Okay. Don't ask about my credentials, Jim.
I was just going to ask you. Background, buddy.
Yeah, he's got no background. He's got no background in that at all, but we're going to do it anyway.
So we're certifying he's an environmental catastrophe? Is that what we're doing?
Motion made by Peter, seconded by Alan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, one last thing, so I'm taking your vote as a go-ahead because officially, you should not take a vote concerning the grant application until after the public hearing.
Well, that will do in two weeks, when we do the public hearing.
We'll do a confirmatory vote, how's that?
That's completely separate.
We'll do a confirmatory vote, how's that?
Thank you.
You want me to respond?
Thank you.
You made the motion.
No, no, that's a separate issue, it's fine. All right, next up, let's do, let's bring up the, and we've got another committee sitting here, so let's do them. The Charter Review Commission. Let's bring them up and do those.
This one I'm talking about.
Okay, so those are under discussion on vote of articles for spring town meeting, okay, just for everybody's edification, all right? We should have three articles, I believe, right? Four? Okay. Four?
Foa.
This should be foa?
Foa.
Foa, please?
Maybe five after this nice discussion.
We sent you last week a list of the articles that the Charter Review Committee voted last night by a unanimous vote to put before the April town meeting. The first one is to see if the town will vote to make the position of town clerk an appointed position rather than an elected position or take any other action relative thereto.
Move to include.
Motion made to include by Peter, seconded by Alan, any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, five zero zero.
The second one, to see if the town will vote to amend the Charter, Section 3-1A, to add the words sewer commissioners after the words a board of assessors, or to take any other action relative thereto.
That's a cleanup. A motion made by Alan, seconded by Peter, any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
Okay. Three.
That's a bummer, huh?
Yeah, it's going too smoothly, by God.
Too smoothly, we'll get to one, maybe.
Three, to see if the town will vote to amend the Charter, Section 3-9, Board of Road Commissioners, by striking it in its entirety or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion made by Alan.
Second for discussion, because I'm kind of curious as to the.
Seconded by Peter, any discussion, up to you.
Yeah, why do you want to do this?
Because in the discussions of the nuts and bolts of the charter, which is really the nuts and bolts of the government of the town of Wareham, it's the only board or commission that is mentioned in the charter, other than, you know, departments, okay? The road commissioners were created because the board of selectmen, who are, in fact, the road commissioners in other towns under Massachusetts general laws, weren't getting enough stuff done in the right timeframe, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The Charter Review Committee believes unanimously that the job belongs either under the bylaws or back with the board of selectmen. Article number four, which is not before you, but is actually part of three, okay, if you look at that quickly, is to see if the town will amend the bylaws by inserting a new Article 9, Board of Road Commissioners, as follows. So we believe that it belongs back in the bylaws, not under the charter document itself. I did have, again, with Mr. Tropiano's blessing, another conversation with Mr. Bowen, and he tells me that what I have before you is not, it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't, in number four, it wouldn't really do what we want it to do, and his, his changes are that the board, the board of selectmen would become the road commissioners again.
I think it should have been, never left them.
And I couldn't agree with you more, however.
No reason at all, because it really, it's not that much to do, believe it or not.
Well, there are, I would like to recognize Jackie Nichols, because Miss, she went before the road commissioners with an idea about numbering houses and naming streets, okay? And she went before the road commissioners and they adopted unanimously her suggestion, and I let her speak to that. So really, I'm not putting you off, but I'm saying that three and four really need to be looked at together. Make the selectmen do what the selectmen are supposed to do under the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but go ahead.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
One of the things that I have found since I've been here is that there has been a disconnect in, in the way that, and there's no real written or even verbal policies as to how street names are done and numbers and when they're done and who does them, and that's because the selectmen are trying to be road commissioners, and then the road commissioners meet once a month. Meanwhile, people are down trying to pull permits on streets that don't exist and map and lots that, you know, so forth and so on. So I got together with Ken in the planning, and I came up with a policy memo that basically moves the street address numbering, the, the nuts and bolts day-to-day of that into the assessor's office.
That's fine.
Which, since we have to give them map and lots anyway.
Yeah, you have to give them that anyway, right.
Makes sense.
Right.
So now, when somebody's going to look for a permit, and it's on a bigger project, and I'll use, for example, the Windward Pines that are under construction right now up at Baypoint, when I have a chance to get ahead of it and get it set up, then when they come in for their building permits, they already have their proper map and lot, and they already know what the address is going to be, whereas I had to go and change all of them, because they all, when they were originally assigned, they went the wrong way on the road, and I had to change them all. But that, and we have issues where, like, developers on plans pick out their own map and lot numbers and just kind of, you know, go with it, and we're trying to rein that in. So I'm turning that policy memo into procedures that will affect the road commissioners, planning department, assessors department, and building department.
I think that's a great idea.
Can I, I speak to this?
Go ahead, Jim.
I think we have three town employees on the road commissioners, being the police chief.
Mr. Menard.
The director of planning, and Dave Menard, the director of municipal maintenance. Are you a, a non-voting ex officio member? No.
I am a voting member, she is not.
I thought we kind of did that.
We, we thought, we.
I thought we kind of did that.
We were both, we were both interested in.
Yeah, but non-voting, I thought that's what we, we kind of, so just.
We've been working together, but there's not, right.
Yeah, so what you basically have incorporated is bringing the assessor's office into the process of street numbering and naming through the road commissioners, correct? I mean, they have the authority to do that.
I can't, I can't wait an entire month to get things changed and approved. I'm going to go, it's, yeah, it's process, it's nuts and bolts, and part of the, the process that we're putting together is that I will go to the road commissioners' meeting every month, and I will meet with the planning board every month, and I will meet with the building commissioner, so that, you know, all of these things are coming together, but they're all pivoting, you know, around.
Right, you're, you're right in the same building, so I think it's good. I'm not saying it's a bad process, and, you know, the road commissioners, I think, are part of the Mass General laws, and we adopted it, and they used to be elected in this town, and then we decided we were going to appoint them in this town, I believe, if you, from my reading of the by, Charter from years ago. I think they have a purpose, and, and I think it's nice to have public, you know, people from the public having input on, on some of the issues that come forward and, and just not the administration within the municipality, and, and that's just my perspective on it.
Okay. Just so you know, we, we, we used to be the commission, the.
That's correct.
Forever, and then.
That's correct.
They got rid of it once upon a time, as they took the sewers commissioners away from us, as you can remember, and I don't know why these things happen, but they do.
I can tell you why this happened.
Well, but at any rate, it happened. Well, we're not going to go there, but it just, it happened, okay? And I always thought it was ridiculous for it to be taken away from the board of selectmen. It's really their job, it's Mass General laws that says it's our job, and it's something that we should do, and it's easy enough for us to do, I mean.
Especially if the, if the day-to-day part of the addresses stuff is not, you know, stacked in front of you.
Exactly, and that's the perfect solution to that. You see what I'm saying? That's the perfect solution. And the good thing is, is that then you actually have elected, you actually have elected road commissioners at that point, right? Because we're all elected.
Right.
So that, you know, that sort of fits the bill. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just curious what, I, I know you're a citizen member of the road commission. I know you're a citizen member of the road commission. What do the other two non-employee members of the road commission think about your plan to exterminate them?
It should be four.
It's four, yeah.
Four?
Four at large.
Four, three.
What are the others? Has this been discussed on the road commission?
It has not been discussed with the road commissioners as a board, it has been discussed individually with separate members who believe that it should go back to the Board of Selectmen.
Really?
Of course. Yes.
So they're...
Because what it is doing, it is tying up, once a month, the police chief, the director of municipal maintenance, the planning director, in other words, three employees of the town who are being made to step into a role that, under mass general law, is yours.
Yep.
And the thing is, Peter, is that those people can come into our meeting if we need their advice or whatever.
Exactly.
You know what I mean? So you can bring them in when you need them to get their...
Yeah, no, I get that.
So it makes perfect sense, it always has to me, and I totally agree with you.
So are we going to change three? To say that it reverts back to selectmen?
So if we leave three, it gets rid of it, and then four wouldn't happen.
Well, no, four would...
It wouldn't need a bylaw at that point, because it would automatically go back to us.
Does it automatically go back to us, though?
No. Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Bowen had offered that I amend that, but...
Well, let me...
We can't vote on it.
It's still, to the extent that it's a charter change, it's still going to have to be voted out of the charter.
It has to be voted out of the charter.
First by town meeting, and then by the legislature, so it's... It's going to take you some time to kill yourself here, I'm just saying.
Right. Oh, I understand that. But I think death is what is desired.
Death is in order, so, okay.
Death is in order.
So are we withdrawing number four, then?
Am I withdrawing number four, Mr. Bowen?
Just to get it back to us?
Back to you.
Okay, in order for me to bring you number four as edited by Mr. Bowen, I will have to go back to my meeting on Monday and have them vote it, and then if I can do that, I would just send it back to you and not have to come and explain it to you.
Yeah, right. Let's see what he says.
But if we can get away with just getting rid of it, then I will have my committee vote to not want to do it.
Okay. Go ahead.
When I edited it, I did it solely because I thought, well, maybe you really want this, so I'll edit it down to a form that would be lawful. Honestly, do you need it? No. Chapter 40, Section 22, provisions of Chapter 90, other sections of the law, tell the road commissioners what they have to do anyway. So, do you need it? No.
Okay. Then I would ask that you not vote on number four.
But add number three.
But add three, which...
Basically gets rid of them, okay.
Basically gets rid of them over...
Motion to second on three.
Yeah.
Can you read it?
You want a motion?
No, we already had a motion.
The first three, yeah.
Oh, we did?
To see if the town will vote...
Oh, we did them all?
No, but we haven't voted on three.
We haven't voted, okay, that's what I thought. Yeah, because he asked for time to talk. Sorry. I'm sorry, I got lost there, with so much going on.
Do you want to hear three again?
I know, we're all set. We have a motion on the floor.
You do?
Yes, please.
May I?
Go ahead, yeah, sure.
To see if the town will vote to amend the Charter, Section 3-9, Board of Road Commissioners, by striking it in its entirety, or take any other action relative thereto. That's the motion.
In other words, they're getting rid of it.
That's the first step. You have to also, the language should also authorize the Board of Selectmen to file...
Petition the legislature.
Petition the legislature for this as well, since we have to go to the legislature with it.
With the charter change, doesn't it?
Yes.
Unless you want to...
Well, this is a charter change.
Do it on the ballot.
It is a charter change, so that, once it's in the motion, doesn't it?
I mean, you could put it in the motion, but...
Yeah, it's going to have to petition the legislature.
Well, all three of them have to be petitioned.
Rich, do we need to add the language about petitioning the legislature, or is it just automatic, because it's a charter change?
These would be considered...
Charter change.
Well, yes, they're considered charter changes. Difference between minor and major charter changes. If you want to, if you wanted to go to the legislature, if that's where you want to go, I'd get the language in there. If you were going to go through the, I think, longer process...
Well, just assume go to the legislature.
Yeah. Then, we can talk about adding in the...
Then I will... I can bring these back to you, not personally, but I will get you these for next week, next Tuesday.
Love us enough to come see us.
Mr. Chairman, with respect...
Or do you want to add it right now?
All the legislation, all the language would say is to see if the town will vote to amend the Charter by seeking special legislation to amend Section blankety-blank of the Charter in the manner as follows, or take any other action relative thereto, colon, existing language.
I didn't take shorthand.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I was asked whether I was looking for a career or a husband.
How'd that work out for you?
Didn't.
Judy and I talked about that a little earlier today, which is why I'm hazarding the joke. I'm saying it not so much for your transcription purposes, but just so that the board knows that the change is just purely technical in nature, and if you wanted it back, you certainly could have it back.
I would assume that the chairman will allow this chairman to go talk to Attorney Bowen on Thursday and get this straightened out?
Yeah, she can do that, straighten it out.
Thank you.
Why don't we just, you know, remove the motion and the second, let Mr. Bowen just read off what he wants, and let's vote on that. Make it simple and just get it done.
All right.
Okay, so...
Let's do that. So, and the same is for all three of them.
I'll remove my motion.
The same is for all three of them, you know?
Yes, but I'll remove my motion for this one.
Okay, so you withdrew your motion, and you withdrew your second, right?
Yeah. What about for the first two? We're going to have to vote to do away with the first two, because they don't have that.
And then I would ask you to reconsider the last, the first two. Okay. Reconsideration by Allen, seconded by Peter. Okay, now, I'm asking you to reconsider. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay, now, I'm... Go ahead. I'm going to ask...
I'm going to make a motion.
Yes.
A suggested motion.
Right. Instead, reconsidering, so you're making an amendment?
I move that the Board of Selectmen...
No, it's to see if...
No, 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 no.
Don't say I move, because I'll just say so.
No, 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 you haven't heard my motion. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize the placement on the warrant of the three articles with the inclusion of a preface to be written by town council that the charter changes be obtained by a petition for special legislation.
So will...
Motion made by Allen, seconded by Peter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining?
I'm opposed.
Okay.
You just grouped all three together, correct?
Yeah.
All right, so...
Well, they have to be all the same, so...
Well, you...
Were you against one of them?
Yeah, I was against the third one of eliminating the road commissioners without having, moving them into the bylaws. But we could have divided the question.
No, no. Well, we're going to divide it right now.
Mr. Chairman, I move to divide the prior question into one, two, and three, and that the chairman take a vote on one, two, and three separately, subject to the same conditions as stated in the previous motion.
All right, motion on number one by Allen, seconded by Peter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion on number two, Allen, seconded by Peter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion number three, Allen, Peter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed.
Aye.
All right, so 4-1-0. Bingo. Done. Wow. Thank you.
Writing law right before your eyes, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Now, look at... Look at the press out there, she's like, huh?
Wait, what?
What the heck just happened?
What was that all about?
Not that I blame you, but I can see the look on your face. You were like, what?
The story tomorrow's going to read, last night, the board voted to do something to something.
You thought this was the Senate for a minute, didn't you?
Thanks, Jackie.
Thank you. Thanks for hanging in there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
The discussion of trash of the CMW, I'm keeping this on, as you well know. I don't think there's any changes to that at this minute, so we'll kind of go past that. Next up is a discussion and vote of proposal to change the name of the Board of Selectmen to the Wareham Select Board. Go ahead, Allen. I think we did this once already, but... Let's talk about it again.
Okay. It's on now, Bob.
Ah, yeah, who has more fun than us?
Yes, nobody. Okay, basically, 8:30 in the morning on Saturday, we have the business meeting of the Massachusetts Selectmen's Association, which they officially changed the name to the Massachusetts Select Board Association. And they're asking, basically, that the individual cities, actually towns, that have Board of Selectmen consider changing their name. It's not required under the new laws, et cetera. They've written, it says whether you have the name changed or not, it's all covered by everybody. So it's strictly a matter of whether this board wants to make that change or not.
Okay.
I can say that I'm probably the only district representative most likely that will not have the change.
Hey, you know, it happens.
It's great being popular, look at that.
Okay, so are you making a motion that we do that?
Because I have to ask, someone else should make the motion what they want to do.
All right, does anybody want to make a motion to change the name of the board?
Actually, you make the motion, you can vote, you know, far, and you can vote, you know, zero, whatever.
Right. Well, does anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion for a purpose of having discussion.
Okay, motion made by Jim. Do I hear a second?
Second for discussion.
All right, second for discussion. All right, discussion.
I mean, we've been the Board of Selectmen since 1739. Once again, you know, earlier tonight, we talked about traditions.
Mass general law, too.
Yeah. You know, and, you know, what's interesting is if the state wanted to change this, they could. If the legislature wanted to tackle this, they could. They could require us to be a select board instead of selectmen. They haven't taken that up. You know? Again, 1739, we were just talking about a couple of schools, and whether we wanted to retain the names, whether we wanted to keep the continuity, the history and this, that, and the other thing. I can tell you that when Select Man, Whiteside was on the board, at one time, I turned to her, and I think I said something like Madam Chairperson, and she pinched me so hard, I think I still have the bruise, because...
She threatened to actually hit me yesterday when we talked about this.
Well, I mean, and again, you know, she's sort of, you know, recalling the history, harkening back to how this all started, and so on and so forth. You know, the term man doesn't just mean man, it means mankind, and I just don't... You know, I suppose it makes a political statement of some sort if you change it to select board, but I just don't really see the need.
Okay, next, anybody else for discussion?
I think what it does is it becomes gender neutral. And it's, you know, a politically correct thing now. I'm not sure of the number of towns in the Commonwealth that have changed it. I know there's quite a few, when I went to the meeting down the Cape, that have become the Select Board. And I think we discussed it about five months ago, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
And so it's come back up again, and...
This will be the last time, at least while I'm chair.
That's all I have to say, thank you.
I can say that the Cape Cod Selectmen and Council's Association, which I attended on Friday night, as I represent that part of the area, have not changed their name of their association.
Right. Okay, so anybody other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? So it's five?
I'm going to abstain on that.
So, okay.
I'm going to fence it here.
All right, so it's 0-4-1.
To not.
0-4-1, which means the motion fails.
Right.
Okay, so we're keeping our name. All right, all right, next up. We're going to move along, and you won't see it again while I'm chair. The next chair can bring that up.
Doing my job.
All right, appointment of council. Well, I don't know, maybe we'll skip that one, we'll go another day.
Yeah, I don't know, he said some things tonight. I didn't like too much, so...
I don't think he was very helpful tonight, I don't know. Got to have a little bit of hot water, maybe, I don't know.
What's the terms of the agreement here?
Besides, I talked to Len, Len, and he's interested, so...
There's got a bidding war here.
Go ahead, council.
All right. I hate to say what I'm about to say.
You're not.
Division 1, Article 3, Section 1 of the Charter says as follows, "The Selectmen shall annually, in March, appoint a town council."
Does it say March?
Yeah.
It's getting late anyways, so it's just postponed that.
I think we always should have done it earlier.
So I could tell you a way around it, but that probably wouldn't be proper.
All right, well, we can...
And it would be presumptuous.
Well, guess...
So I'm not going to say anything.
Well, wait till March, and maybe you'll pee us off more by then, and then we won't have a problem.
He's guaranteed employment for two more months anyway, you know?
So you're guaranteed... Yeah, that's very good, Jim. Guaranteed for two months, it says March, huh? No kidding?
A delayed vote means delayed misbehavior.
Any other town business not reasonably anticipated last 48 hours? Okay. That would bring us to the town administrators' report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did launch the rebranding effort today, and went out to the media sources, campaigned it's highlighting the town's strengths. Part of what we put within this is we want people to know that we're not replacing the gateway, we're honoring our history. We believe in the history, but at some point, you do need to separate yourselves and explain just how tremendous this town is, and that's what we're really looking to do, is get the people from, you know, a couple different things, from those that speak harshly about us, think that, you know, I don't think they've been here, they haven't met the people. This is an amazing town, we're all lucky to be a part of it, and this is what this rebranding effort is really highlighting, the pluses of this community, from, you know, the, obviously, the shores, to the, you'll be, there'll be a grant application coming coming forward from the Division of Natural Resources to update many of our, many of our trails, which is a tremendous resource, and, you know, the, the businesses we have. I mean, we, look at the businesses that are trying to come to our community, or have come here, and those such as, you know, AD Makepeace are headquartered here, from Toby Hospital putting, where South Coast Health is putting a twenty-five million dollar expansion, we're just really excited about the opportunity. And in looking at it, this is, you tell me anywhere on the shoreline where you can still, where you can have a good living, like you can in the community like this, so I'm really proud of it.
The diversity is incredible.
So I'm very proud of this community, and I think this is, this is part of the message we're trying to get out.
You know, and I hope it gets to those people that are here in town, that think badly of their town, because there are that, that select few that continue to talk badly about their town. And if they would just look around at the people, and the help that the people do for everybody, I mean, you know, it's that girl who got in the accident over there, and everybody was running down there to help out, you know, nobody in this town ever, ever gives up a second when something happens that they're not there to help. I know it, I saw it myself.
Yep.
Okay, they're there to help out. And if they would just start looking at it differently, and start picking out the little picky own things that don't really add up to a hill of beans, and don't mean a lot in your life, right, and start to appreciate this town more, then I think that would go a long way for helping in, in the rebranding, and let people understand just what we have here, you know?
Sometimes there's a phenomenon where we all think the grass is greener on the other side.
We always do, I mean, it seems that way.
When you take a look here.
Or a percentage of us do.
Just a comment, what's been happening actually today, in my phone, just when you open up and stuff, and you go look at Google, and just the first piece there, you scroll down, there's different news events and things, it's actually, the whole presentation is in there already for Wareham. So it's already out to the public, which is...
WPRI has done something.
It's really a nice piece.
Those guys are good, I mean, you know, I think, I think it's gonna be a good thing for us, not a bad thing, and I think that the town will appreciate it, and I think everybody will appreciate, you know, a little more civility with everybody. I think that'll happen, just as a matter of course, when you start to make people understand what they really have. Fifty-four miles of coast, I mean, where can you get that anywhere?
And if you remember in the report, I think it got, when you considered some of the levees and dikes, and some of the other, it went up to over eighty miles.
Yeah, if you go up over the, you know, into the, the tributaries and stuff like that, but I'm talking about just along the beaches. You know, fifty-four miles is a lot of miles, you know? So, anyway.
It's this equipment, you gotta get some new equipment in. Sorry, Bob.
Gotta put a lavalier on these guys.
Did, this was, this was promoted by your office and Redevelopment Authority of Selectmen, or?
Well, it was really coming out of administration, I'd spoken beforehand, I'd spoken to different members of the, of the Board of Selectmen, it'd been something I'd brought up, but the, the Redevelopment Authority did not, this wasn't a sponsorship of theirs, so...
No, it's nothing to do with the Redevelopment.
So we have it on our website and stuff, or?
Yeah, and we have Discover, and then you see slash Wareham, we're bringing that back, and it's going to link to our website, but we have a separate one, and as we go with that, we're also, part of that's the, what we want to do is the made in Wareham, highlighting our businesses as well, and, and build off of this. I think it's the first step in something really great for this community.
I know, it was in one of those meetings, and I thought it was, I thought that the planning, the, planning and the ideas at the time, which were not finalized at the time, were, were actually moving in a very good direction, and I thought it was gonna be a great deal by the time it was all said and done. And Derek was able to put it together, and more power to him, so...
Very good.
So if you don't like it, it's my fault, if you like it, it's, it's everybody else who's involved, and I appreciate their help, so...
No, 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 we're gonna blame you no matter what.
Yeah, exactly, you heard what happened to Rich. That end of the table's getting nervous now.
The, I have the budget presentation, I'm gonna be bringing it before the Finance Committee tomorrow night, and then I think next week, if, if we have the time for it, we can go through it for the, with the Board of Selectmen.
We have the executive session next week to discuss...
Yep, and the chief...
The contract, the chief's contract, okay. All right, so we'll be doing that next week in executive session.
Is that six-thirty?
Six-thirty, yeah.
And we can discuss some other things, too.
We will, we'll have, the minutes will be there to talk about, so we'll have those.
Right.
And council is, is, is working on which minutes can be released, okay, so he's been working on that, right? Yeah, I knew he was, so...
No, no, I think we have a couple other things to discuss as February's coming up.
Existing court cases.
What is it exactly, Alan, did you want, did you have something else, specific?
Yeah, Makepeace.
Makepeace, oh, that'll be on, yeah, that's on, that's litigation, so it's in that, it's in reason number three, yes, it's there.
And, I'd like to discuss another gravel operation.
Another one?
In the town, yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, well, that's potential litigation, too, so that's covered on the litigation, so...
Thank you.
All right, okay.
What, do you have a drone?
I know.
He got a drone, he's flying it all over the place.
You know, GAS is pretty good if you know how to use it.
He's going crazy over there.
Different map years, you can see a lot of changes.
That's, we need a drone, though.
Anything else, sir? Okay, all right, so now we get to liaison reports. And Alan has books over there, so everybody go to sleep now. Go ahead, Alan.
Okay, again, the MMA event was pretty interesting overall. Marijuana, social consumption pilot program isn't going on. I picked up one interesting piece that actually, the medical marijuana has actually been allowed to deliver right from the beginning.
Yeah, it has.
Which has never really been promoted out there. But delivery as far as the other retail is still not allowed. They're working on basically those two pieces. We just, I believe the moratorium, Rich came yesterday from the Attorney General for the social clubs, which is gonna be okay, because they still haven't got the social clubs dialed in yet. It's probably gonna be a year before you see anything on that stuff. Got notes here as well. Social consumption limited to twelve communities. Actually, what happens, the state still hasn't written legislation to allow this type of business, so there's no way to do anything technically, even the twelve temporary licenses, because there is no actual legislation at all. There's no smoking gonna be indoors, 'cause consumed, you know, prepared marijuana products, packaged in food only type things, so there's a lot of things going on. As I said, delivery program is where it is, public information is required. What's, there's a new piece also, we're gonna have to report, I think on a yearly basis, and maybe more than that, all our costs and everything associated with our agreement as far as the actual cost of, that we have for a part of our host agreement piece.
Six million dollars.
Right, which is fine, I'd go for seven, but they're gonna, it's gonna be, it's gonna be required in the, it's now required that we have to make this report yearly. I'm hoping that at least they allow us to add the cost of having to do these reports constantly.
Was that, now, was that something the Cannabis Control Commission adopted on their own?
Yeah, which they can.
Yeah.
Did they do it through the Massachusetts Administrative Procedures Act? Have notice and hearings and all that good stuff, or do they just issue a fiat?
No, I think...
Because it substantially changes how contracts are interpreted.
Everything they do is based on they're having open meetings and actually voting. So, I mean, it's here, I'll give it to Mary, anybody who wants to read, it's all there.
I mean, it just goes back to what we were discussing last week.
Can't read it, can you? Anyway, can you? Chicken scratch?
No, chicken scratches, you can read that, it's printed.
He's got very nice handwriting.
Unfortunately, it looks like pretty much we're gonna get hit with a minimum of a twenty-five cent gas tax increase, which is supposed to go toward MBTA, chapter ninety monies, et cetera. They're also discussing four or five other options, based on mileage, they're just crazy things. They've gone and said that the states around us are charging quite a bit more in actual tax on gasoline than we are, and that's one of the reasons they can justify what they're doing. I don't think we're gonna get away with this not happening.
Yeah, they wanna get the mileage off your, off your, when you go to get your sticker.
And they're talking about trucks, it's all...
And then they send you a bill for the, you know, the mileage that you've driven.
Well, what you're doing is you're punishing, you're rewarding everybody who lives and works in Boston, which is, you know, obviously a desirable place, and expensive real estate and everything else, so it's basically a tax that's gonna hurt poor people who have to drive a while for their work.
Well, and that's what it does.
So, a progressive legislator, they're kinda dropping the ball on even thinking about this.
Just think if you live in western Massachusetts, and you don't see the MBTA ever, and you're paying for it.
Yeah, they've also got, with Uber and Lyft, they wanna enact a six-point-two-five...
Yeah, and they're gonna start charging Uber and Lyft for a fee, too.
Also, they can't park in certain areas. And there's other things here, give that to Mary as well.
Of course, they did that under the guise of public safety.
Thank you.
Well, they already, they already taxed taxes.
And what's also quite interesting is the Alcoholic Beverage Commission, our friend Ralph Sacramone was there, did a presentation, and it listed different things that we could put on conditions of new licenses. And one of the first condition up was a non-sale of miniatures, NIPS, among other things.
Unfortunately, we don't have any new licenses.
No, but I've asked the questions, and he hasn't given me a ruling yet, and he always likes it when I ask questions anyways. If a license is basically sold to someone else, do we have the opportunity at that point to do it?
Is that considered a new license, yeah?
Well, that's, that's the question I put to him, which he's gonna have to get an answer.
It's a good question.
And also, if, if the ownership is just transferred, per se, you know, as far as it goes, whatever, and the last one I asked, which I don't think's gonna...
Problem is, you take too much of their business away.
Which I don't think will fly, is when we renew licenses every year, can we do it at that time?
Well, they, the bottle thing, it's in front of the bottle bill, too, right, isn't it, pending for that?
I'll mention, there's two things, there's a bottle bill on miniatures in particular, that's from the House and Senate being discussed, as is the plastic, you know, bag ban bill. They both have a possible chance of passing.
Yeah, if you save twenty bottles, you get a new nip.
Yeah, we have thousands everywhere anyways.
Yeah, and then you can just walk around the streets of that.
So, we give Mary that one, too.
There's another one for us.
Thank you.
And last but not least, the Onset Bay Center, which is what they're calling their, I don't know if Bob can focus in on that wonderful thing. Bob, are you awake?
Hey.
Hey.
I can hear you.
Can you see this? Do you shake a little bit or not? He hates show and tell. Okay, thank you. They, on Friday... I took it away, sorry. On Friday, they did a presentation over at the Glen Cove, and then took people over to see the inside of the facility, it's actually, the walls are up inside. I'll just read a few things here. Their goal is a complete rehabilitation of the Onset Bathhouse, celebrating its opening with the community, eight-hundred-and-fifty people, at least six-hundred-seventy-two unique children, in full and half-day programs, a hundred-and-sixty-eight adults will participate in outdoor programs at the Onset Bay Center. They'll host seven weeks of full and half-day youth programming through the summer for a wide range of children and adult evening programming. There'll be after-school programs, evening programs as well, enhance public access at Wicca's Island, install floats at Burgess Point, and provide stewardship of OBC lands, recruit highly qualified staff to facilitate summer programs, develop new community partnerships for specialized programs, maintain working relationships with program providers, including the YMCA and the, the Masque kayak people. There'll be morning programs with like beach yoga, meditation, sunrise walk on Wicca's Island, learn to shellfish, beach cleanups, rowing, and birding. The youth programs are pretty interesting, because they'll offer one-week sessions over, I think it's seven weeks, from end of June to middle of August. It's open enrollment with scholarship, you know, opportunities where kids can't afford to pay, and they're working with the Wareham Care and the Boys and Girls Club, the kids involved will be seven or twelve years old, and that's the half-day, the scholarship program explains how that's gonna work. Essentially, households earning between forty-five and sixty-three thousand dollars a year will receive a seventy-five percent discounted sessions. Any household earning less than forty-five thousand will receive a full hundred percent discount. So they're really reaching out to the community, especially at Onset as well. It's open to the Onset residents, et cetera, Wareham residents, but also the surrounding communities. And they'll have different, different, you know, host programs, et cetera, and adult programs, people falling in the water. They'll have private rentals as well.
No, no, shame on me, though, I did not, that wasn't part of the focus of the press release, 'cause that is one of the tremendous new assets of our community.
Well, I'll, I'll read off their special programs to get the people, there'll be a ribbon-cutting event in June, there'll be, they'll have a presence at the Onset Chili Fest in March, there'll be a movie night at the OBC, monthly open house, there'll be a monthly full-moon paddle, summer solstice celebration, Fourth of July Boat Parade, Illumination kayak trip, lecture series by the Buzzes Bay Coalition, hosted canal cruises, hosted fishing trips, Buzzes Bay Rowing Club Onset Race, Rowing Club Meets and Greets, weekly shellfish programs of the Harbor Master, again, we have to thank, thank Gary for being extremely active with this program as well. Sand Castle Day at Onset Beach, Shark Fest, kayak poker run, Coast Guard Auxiliary Power Squadron, fall eleven-week navigational course, which is a really good thing to have locally here, end-of-season celebration Labor Day weekend, Onset Holiday Stroll, and various U.S. sailing programs by trained instructors. I'll give this to Mary, this is, you know, everybody should be overjoyed, this is a huge project for this town, and it's really something that you don't see anywhere else. I think you have to go up to Ducksbury to that sailing program, which is extremely expensive and very limited for kids.
The parking kiosks are very happy about this, too.
Yes, I'm sure they are.
They are, they're crying out.
And the last piece I have has to do with SERPET, the usual DLTA, which is technical assistance programs, gave a copy to Derek and a copy to Ken, we have to file very quickly in order to get...
We're maxed out on that, Alan, that's part of the Deacon School, so we can't do anything else, we're already...
No, we can still do more.
We spoke to them, they said that's, that's all maxed out.
You haven't spoke to me yet, remember, I'm the chair of the commission.
Well, whip 'em into shape.
Yes. I believe we can sit there and ask.
You really say yes, dear?
Yes, dear. I'm trained, what do you want?
So you just mentioned about, what'd you say, a grant for the Deacon School?
Yes, we already have it, we're already, it's already in the queue, it's really this past year.
The existing Deacon School, the, the site and stuff, to try and figure out what to do with it.
How to use it. Best practices.
Or prospective uses.
Right.
Yes. There's two, there's two sections that, that we're in, we're already in the queue for that from last, this past year, twenty-nineteen, it's ongoing, actually. So I'm saying, this particular grant here, I mentioned, is the one for twenty-twenty.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, but technically, we can probably get something.
And I'd like to, like to see where that, what direction that's going in, or proposed.
You're welcome, Bob, you're still on the... No, we'll get a report from SERPET when they finish it, if you like anything else they do.
Okay, can I ask the, the knowledgeable one here about the surveying?
It's all your fault.
The surveying going down along Route Six, are they gonna resurface that?
When you say Route Six, where exactly?
Down on Marion Road, in front of the...
What, what that will be is, that project there is, we had a meeting in Marion a few weeks ago, if you remember, I think I spoke about it on the sixth. They're looking at an engineering survey and feedback from the communities, 'cause I brought forms here, and also put it on the website, to see what people want, whether it's gonna be a two-lane road, or a two-lane with a third turning lane, or four lanes, bike path, et cetera.
Right, but they're actually surveying and marking.
Yes, and, but you're looking at probably four to five years before it actually happens.
I just...
The only thing that is going forward that I know of right now is the Swift Beach Light, they're still working on that, they're not waiting for that piece. There'll probably be a change at the Hathaway Road intersection as well.
Yeah.
And then there'll be stuff through the other four towns.
That's, that's why I asked about the paving, because...
And they're looking at sidewalks.
If they were looking, working on a light, and if they were gonna pave it, it doesn't bode well to try to get it done after the fact, when you have random paving down, so that's, that's why I kinda...
What'll happen with that also, Jim, if, you know, the, from Swift Beach Road, it comes in at an angle?
I know.
In the road like this, they're actually gonna take and straighten that out and change it, 'cause where the crosswalk is, is away from the intersection.
Away, yeah.
As well. So that's a change, and the same thing in Hathaway, comes in this way, to the road that way, that's also gonna be taken care of.
That should be, that should be interesting.
Okay, you got anything in their liaison reports?
I do, I do.
One more thing. You? Sure.
You said that was your one more thing.
No, actually, that's, that's my last one more thing.
So you needed two more things?
Three more things.
Go ahead.
Are we okay?
Yeah, go ahead. We're all snoozing already, but go ahead.
I'm trying to remember what it was gonna be now. Oh, jeez. Yeah, let it go, it's all right.
No, no, come on, finish, finish!
I'm good.
I know. We're all gonna sit here until you finish.
No, I'm gonna save it for next week.
Moving right along.
All right.
Who's next, Mary?
Jim, you're up.
Me? I, I did go to the...
We're gonna run out of time.
The plan...
Not for you, if he kept going.
I, I did tend the Planning Board meeting last night, and they did vote to approve or endorse the master plan, as they had been going through it for months, and Mr. Richard Swenson shepherded it through, thank you, Richard.
Yes.
I guess we'll see it once it's all, all the editing's done, and we'll see the actual master plan as it, as they've approved it. I believe it's gonna go in front of the town meeting for endorsement, that was the discussion last night. In addition, there were sent some articles to review for warrant insertion. One of them was kind of unclear, and I didn't see it until after I got home, it was sent out a little after six o'clock, having to do with FEMA and the flood insurance maps and whatnot, came to the office. Now, did we send that over? Did the town administrator send it over? Not trying to hook anybody. So, I, I wanna, I wanna give them credit for, and Chairman Barrett credit for moving that through, so if it does need to be on the warrant, they did their homework, and they approved what they felt was necessary.
what they felt was necessary.
Well, we'll see. Go ahead, Alan, it's usually a Ken.
Yeah, well, Ken was ill, I guess, so I just, you know, I just want to thank them.
Okay. Next, Peter?
Yeah. Forgot what I was going to say. Oh, the charter change that town meeting requested of the legislature through us last year has made it through the House, it's made it through the Senate, and it's currently still on the governor's desk awaiting signature. He had a busy week last week, so hopefully he gets it signed this week, it goes into law then. At that point, the timeframe for submitting warrant articles will be expanded until, I think it's the second Monday in March is when we have to close the warrant post.
We could, we could have done that anyhow if you counted back from when town meeting was, it would have been March 5th to 7th.
Just because the election was changed.
But we went from the old.
Yeah, we did.
Right.
We did, so.
So we used, actually, the 45 days as a minimum.
Yep.
Right?
Yes.
Yeah, we didn't do anything wrong, we just didn't do it as right as we could have.
We just cut, brought the, cut, you know, shortened the time from which people could submit.
So it, and interestingly enough, if you look at the timeframe that's in the charter change, and now that we've moved the election back, it's still going to be roughly 45 days before town meeting anyway, so it's, it seems like a bit of a distinction without a difference, but.
Yep.
Okay, are you set?
Yep.
Mary?
Nope.
All right, so I got two things. For one, interesting enough, George LeBlanc, wherever he was, is, God bless, rest his soul, he was electrical inspector here, I don't know, for a long, long, long time. And one of the things he made, he made us do is, and everybody thought it was stupid, was you see over there, if you look at the plugs, you'll see that the ground is on top.
On top, yeah.
Right. So you know all the kids in this town that are trying to drop the stupid things and cause that short circuit or stupid fire? They can't do that, because you can't drop it on it, it only hits the ground, all right? So, and George used to argue with everybody about that, forever he argued about that, but he insisted on it, and as it turns out, it was probably a good idea now. It probably helped a lot of people. Go ahead.
I got, actually, one thing I just found. I don't know what we have for bring-your-own beer or whatever booze, you know. Do we have a regulation?
No.
Well, ABCC.
You don't allow it?
We don't have, we don't allow BYOB at this point.
Do we have it as a regulation? Because the ABCC has no regulation at all. So if we don't, we have to have it.
It's just a policy of the board that we don't allow it. We, we talked about this way back, I want to say, I remember talking about it in 2000, I remember talking about it along the way.
We have to, we have to under.
We never, we just had sort of unwritten policy, we just didn't do it.
Under Ralph's information, we have to have a set of rules written.
Well, we can, we can do it.
So you can add it to future meetings.
Because it's just something we didn't allow, so, but we can, we can write a rule about it. You guys are working on that now, so you can.
Well, not on this, but.
Think about it, okay. All right, next up is, I went to the sewer commissioners' meeting with the town of Bourne. As you know, they're talking about, you know, the agreement and so on and so forth between the town, and they came up with two things that they were interested in. They were looking to get 63,000 gallons of additional flow. Right now, they have 200,000 allocated, they only use 110,000. So they're short by quite a bit on their allocation, anyway. So I don't know why they want 63,000 more, but they were talking about they wanted to maybe work Main Street or whatever. And the other thing they were talking about was, geez, it just went out of my head just like that. They were talking about the fees and stuff that they get charged as far as administration and this, that, and the other thing. And, you know, Derek actually had worked on this when there was an issue, and I thought he put a pretty good plan together when I was there, and it seemed like a good plan, and they had bought into the plan, which was really, we gave them a fixed number, right, didn't we? And everything else went away, and we were working forward from there. But, you know, we gave, the list of things that we give them that tells like, well, this, 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 this is what you're paying for, this, this, and this, was complicated at best, as far as I'm concerned. It was very difficult to fathom. I was looking at it, I was saying, I don't know what the hell they're talking about here. So that's going to get worked on, I'm sure, and as over time, and so on and so forth. But remember, the discussion that they're having right now is they're trying to talk to them well about the outflow pipe, and get them on board with the whole outflow and the whole thing like that. And that they have authority on. But as far as the authority on the agreement between the two towns, that's ours. It's this board right here. We make that agreement, with the help of our town administrator, I hope. Shake your head, yes. Yes, okay. With the help of our town administrator, I hope. So that, although it was nice, it was nice to talk to them, and they seem to want to be a partner and not necessarily a, how should I say this? They don't want to be a customer, so to speak, because they're under the impression that we've treated them like a customer instead of a partner in the plant, you know? Which, remember, they pay 17.1%, right? Of the total cost of the plant, whatever the operations, whatever expenses we have, and they really have no say over the expenses, which is very interesting.
Any expenses?
Yeah, I mean, if we upgrade the plant, they are responsible 17.1%. If we line pipes, they're responsible 17.1%. Yeah, it's like a bouquet for us, right. If they get three towns, we pay, no matter what.
Do they have a person on the board?
No, this, it's not even a board. It's, they don't.
The commission, do they have a person on the commission?
They have their own sewer commissioners, and the thing that interests me the most, and I want to say this, is that we charge, what, 600 something dollars?
Six, was it 636?
636.
Or EDU.
And they're at 900 something to their customers.
Economy of scale. We've got 9,000 EDUs, they have 1,000.
Yeah, they don't have enough EDUs, you know, to make it work, so they're paying, their customers over there are paying like 900. Big difference, you know? But anyway, it's an interesting meeting, it was nice to meet with those guys and so on, and things kind of going along. They're really trying to get them into, they want to get somebody, this whole idea of regional, which you know, which is really being pushed by the coalition, big time, and getting this outflow pipe installed and all that. And now they're looking at $25 million to put this pipe in.
How many towns are on board, though? One?
No, there's nobody. Not one town has signed on to it yet.
It's five towns, there's no reason they would.
Nobody has done anything to sign on.
There's been no official vote from Wareham either, too.
No, exactly. So nobody's signed on for anything at this point, although the coalition seems to keep pushing and having meetings, and they want to come here, and you know, whatever, all that stuff. We'll see how it plays out, that's all I can tell you. We don't know where it's going to go, nobody knows where it's going to go.
I would think if no one signs on, it's not going to go anywhere.
Right, because we're not going to spend, you know, see, it's almost like they want us to.
One would think.
Well, but they almost, it's almost like they want us to spend the 25 million and hope they come. It's absurd.
This needs to be done through, actually, a legislation creating a sewer district. I don't even think intermunicipal service agreements.
Well, but, but you know what? If they do that, and they create a district, then we lose control over it completely.
That's correct.
And I'm not so sure that we want that to happen, either.
Establishment of it, and that's sort of going back to them seeking the allocations, and I appreciate it and I understand it, but they just spent close to $8 million for 100,000 gallons. Our allocations are our lifeblood for economic development, and as much as I love them as a partner, I don't see us until we have our hands on the future of how we can expand the plant's capacity, allowing any other allocation. I appreciate it, I understand it.
No, no, I understand that, and I agree with that, at this point.
And the other thing is, again, that plant is our economic development lifeblood. Losing control of it, this town cannot lose control of its, of its future by giving up the authority over that plant. Now, if it's some sort of format that, where Wareham has 50.01% of the voting rights, maybe, but other than that, you can't give it up. It's too important to the future of this community.
No, I totally agree with that. I totally agree with what he's saying there. We cannot afford to lose control of the plant. Now, I don't mind having other partners that are involved and doing whatever, but we have to have the final say and the control, because what might be good for them is not good for us, and we have to be more concerned about us.